I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We advise that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the Sunshine Mall and the following act. Notice advertising the Burlington County time, Michigan and Imperial Coast on January 4th, 2019. And put on the bulletin board on the seat. Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Romano?
Here.
Ms. Correa?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mr. Catchen?
Here. So before we start with some of our business, we have a presentation today from David White, that was good, from the Burlington County Department of Economic Development. This will be about fifteen or so minutes. And we appreciate you taking the time to come on out and talk to us about what's happening with the county and economic development. Sure, I'd like if you would, that's for recording purposes, not for amplification, so speak with your outdoor voice.
Okay.
And that way the mob will be able to hear you.
Thank you very much, appreciate this opportunity. As Gary said, I'm Dave White from the Department of Economic Development and Regional Planning. I provided you, we provided you with a printout on our PowerPoint that we usually use to make this presentation. For the public, excuse my background. First of all, I'd like to talk about where the Bridge Commission is. And when it comes to economic development, I'd like to give you some history. In 2002, the Freeholders, and this is on slide, page one of your PowerPoint. The Freeholders gave the approval authority to the Bridge Commission instead of creating another commission. And in 2010, they moved the Department of Economic Development and Regional Planning from the county under the Bridge Commission so that they could serve as an approval authority and development agency for the county. What we do, what the approval authority does, what economic development and regional planning does is we assist municipalities with economic development and regional planning such as master plan revisions, reexaminations, redevelopment designations, grant writing. We provided a seventy-three art services and regional planning provided a $73,000 in-kind match to do a study of the Route 130 and Bridge Borough Road, Creek Road intersection. That was done by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. We initiated in the early 2000s the Route 130 corridor revitalization plan. Mark Remsen, my director, our director, won an award for that. And we are currently engaged with the municipalities in revisiting that plan and updating it. We have, we have grant writing services and we have obtained $24 million in grants over the last twelve years, including $33,500 for Delran. In the last seven years, twenty-three towns used our regional planning services for 111 projects for an estimated $2.88 billion. We assisted in the cleanup of the Rankocas Creek when we had major flooding issues in 2000. And again, in 2010, the Bridge Commission funded $5.4 million to remove 1,680 tons of debris from the creek. And you know that the creek ends up in Delran. We have pooled lending refinancing. We have refinanced $1.2 billion of debt since 2002, saving thirty-two municipalities and entities $28.3 million in interest costs. That includes Delran, Delran Board of Education, and the Delran Fire District Number One. And we also have small business assistance. We help with location, direction, and financing. And that's what I'm here to talk about tonight is our small business loan program. On slide three, you'll see that it began in 2000, in 1995. The federal government authorized us with pooled funds. These are revolving loans. As they get paid back, we have them to lend out. On slide four?
What's that headline? Slide four?
I'm sorry?
I think it's five he's going to.
We're, we're out of sync. So, the cover is not a slide number, right?
That's correct.
So what's your headline?
Small Business Revolver Loan Fund Program. You should have a rap loan and fixed asset loan. There are two loans.
Thank you.
The direct loan on the next page. Direct loan is simply through the Bridge Commission. A maximum of $50,000, ten years. And again, it's directly through us. Next page, slide six, fixed asset loan. This is what we call a GAAP loan. We partner with a lending agency or bank and we can do up to 25% of the project, up to $200,000. So we could, we could help fund an $800,000 project, $200,000 at our rates. And the borrower would have to put in 10% of their own and then get the remaining 65% from another lender. We usually, we will coordinate that with a bank or another lending agency. Now, the nice part, page seven, slide seven, our interest rate. We are always 75% of prime. Prime rate currently went up to five and a half percent, which would make our rate 4.125. We are capped at four. So our loans are currently at 4%, they won't go any higher. The other nice thing, our application fee is $200. When you send in your application, a check for $200, that's it. No closing costs, no extra fees, nothing else. Okay, now the cumbersome part is, like with all loans, when you borrow money, you have to provide proof that you're going to pay it back. And with this being federal money, we have to be very, very careful about that. So slide eight is the requirements. Really, there are two basic requirements to borrow money from us. Your project must be in Burlington County and you have to create jobs. One full-time job equals $35,000 borrowed. One part-time job, yeah, one part-time job equals $10,000. So you have eighteen months to create those jobs from the time of your approval. And what we do is we have a corporate and personal guarantee that you will repay the loan and actually we grant a warrant on your personal or business property. That's slide 10. Those are the collateral requirements. Sometimes we run into some, some issues with, especially with startups and entrepreneurs who we will lend to, where banks usually don't. Banks usually require you to have three, three years of business experience before they'll lend to you. And why a lot of startups come to us, that they have to have the collateral in real estate. We will not take any kind of equipment because of depreciation and the difficulty in dealing with that. So it has to be in real estate. Slide 11 is a snapshot of our loans. That's what we gave out to the public, you can follow along. You can see all the breakdown of our direct loan and our GAAP loan. Slide 12, we talked about the requirements, all the documents that we need, a business plan. We need financial projections. The Small Business Development Center in, at Rutgers Camden services the southern counties of New Jersey, including Burlington County. You'll see a whole list of things they do there for free. And we recommend when businesses come to us, we usually recommend that they go down there, start there, make an appointment, get a counselor, no cost, and sit down with them and they'll go over a business plan and prepare them. As we like to tell our prospective buyers, we don't want you to fail. We want to see you succeed. They will tell you what you should be borrowing, how much you should be borrowing, what you're capable of borrowing. Because in essence, coming to us, we're going to put a lien on your house, we don't want you to lose your house. Not that we've ever gone after anybody and taken their house, but that's the prospect. The last page, 13, is additional resources. We talked about different lending agencies and banks that we partner with. Most of the, of the banks and even some of these lending agencies, they will, they will underwrite SBA loans. SBA loans, the SBA guarantees them, but there are really high fees with that compared to ours. So we try to sit down with the agencies and the lenders and go over our program, how we can help, help them. So I went over all the different things that the Bridge Commission does for the communities. Again, all those things I said in the beginning, there was no cost to any municipalities for those services. We continue to do them, we love doing that. But what I'm here to ask is how you can help us and help your community is if you could put a link to our economic development page on the Bridge Commission website, on your website, it would be a huge help. We're working with trying to get that link on all the municipal websites. And if that could be done, we would certainly appreciate it. You have a wonderful website. It would be up to Jeff and council to find the location that would be most appropriate. I've tried to, I've looked through all of their websites, some of them have a business page. You can put it on there, but whatever you feel would be appropriate. And we also have, we have publications and pamphlets and things. This is what we use for our loan program, it's a half a page flyer. We'd like to leave some of these with you. If you would make them available in the municipal building, maybe the clerk's counter or where your business is committed, they would see something like this. Feel free to, if anybody's talking about starting a business and they, they may need help, refer them to us. That's what we do, we'll help them out. If we can't help them, we will find help for them.
Do you have more of you?
Oh, yeah.
Why don't you, you have here?
I'll have that one, but I have some subtle ones.
Okay, that's okay.
We just got, just completed something today, so we can get it to you. Yep.
Yeah, just bring them up here.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, David, if, I could ask, so is this, is this residents of Burlington County?
Okay. Or? No, they don't have to be.
No business has to be in Burlington?
Yeah, business or the project unless I get Burlington.
Thank you.
I did mention that this is federal money. One of the things that you do not, you can't fund is construction because you have to pay prevailing wages. So when we do a GAAP loan, we use our money for, that's where they furnish your fixtures and use the bank's money. That's why I say we see an animal work with you, we'll reach you and do the best we can. Any more questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No, thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Starting here in Delran. I know this, we just started doing this, right?
Well, you're the second municipality this year.
Thank you.
You've been doing this for the last couple of years, right? I said you've been doing this drill for the last, how many years?
Oh, second.
Well, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Does council have an issue with putting the link on?
I don't think anybody has an issue with putting a link on our website.
Okay.
I think we're good to do that, we'll find the appropriate spot. Jamie is our web, mistress, web mistress, would be appropriate, web mistress, webmaster? She runs our website. Thank you, thanks very much, appreciate your time. Okay, I apologize, I was a little under the weather and apparently my voice was sicker than I was. So we're going to get through this best we can. We need for approval of minutes for December 11, 2019, closed session meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romano?
Abstain.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
I have a approval of minutes for January 8, 2019, action and work session meetings.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next, we have minutes for January 22, 2019, action and work session.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Okay, so we have two ordinances on second reading. And for those of you who have been here before, each of those will have its own separate public hearing. So first is ordinance 2019 dash four. This is a bond ordinance authorizing reconstruction or repair of various roads in and around the township, appropriating the sum of $1.2 million and authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds for bands which are bond anticipation notes. The, in aggregate, the principal amount is not to exceed $1.142,858. And I'll ask for a motion to go into the public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this is the public hearing, ordinance 2019 dash zero four. This is the bond ordinance, which will cover this year's streets program. Anybody have any questions? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for a motion to come out of public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and I need a motion to approve, one second, reading ordinance 2019 dash zero four.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to do the exact same thing, new ordinance. This is ordinance 2019 dash zero five. This is an ordinance of the township establishing, establishing chapter eighty-four of the code of the township entitled Background Checks. As this is second reading, we have a public hearing, I'll ask for a motion to go into public.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we're in our public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Anyone has any questions regarding this ordinance on background checks? I encourage you to make yourself known. Seeing no hands, I'll ask for a motion to come out of public.
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now I need a motion to approve, one second, reading, 2019 dash zero five, the ordinance on background checks.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Now we have ordinances, one ordinance on second reading, this is ordinance 2019 dash zeros.
First reading.
First reading, I'm sorry. And this is an ordinance to establish salaries for various employees covered under the Delran Patrolmen's Association Agreement in the township. And I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Okay, we'll try to get through the resolutions. Resolution 2019 dash fifty-two, this is resolution about outside lien holder foreclosure on tax title lien certificate number thirteen dash zero 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 thirty-three. Ask for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2019 dash fifty-three. This is a resolution authorizing an increase in the change fund for the clerk, tax, and sewer office.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next, we have resolution 2019 dash fifty-four, authorizing 2018 sewer adjustments for new property owners.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next, we have resolution 2019 dash fifty-five. This is a resolution authorizing CME associates to perform engineering services for the Fairview Boulevard curb island removal project in an amount not to exceed $13,000.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2019 dash fifty-six, approving draft license number five sixty-seven and five sixty-eight for the Church of the Resurrection.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Ms. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2019 dash fifty-seven. This is authorizing the tax collector to create sewer accounts and the 2019 billing for various residential properties.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchen? Aye. Next is resolution 2019 dash fifty-eight, establishing salaries for various employees of the township.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2019 dash fifty-nine, authoring the township administrator Jeffrey Hatcher to sign authorization for the aerial speedo controller.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2019 dash sixty. This is a resolution authorizing application for an acceptance of a grant from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund Public Entity Program through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the Department of the Environmental Protection.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next is resolution 2019 dash sixty-one, supporting redevelopment at Ten Rankocas Avenue.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next, we have motions, I need a motion authorizing participation in the Distracted Driver 2019 statewide crackdown grant.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion authorizing the payment of bills, including all purchases made under the Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
I need a motion accepting the report of the tax collector and the township clerk.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
And finally, oh, not finally, next, I need a motion accepting the report of the CFO, including the February year-to-date revenue report and the year-to-date budget report and the February check register.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Finally, I'd like to walk on a resolution as the contract has expired or is about, has expired, correct? Yeah, it's just a motion, it's just a motion though, this is not authorizing anything except I need a motion to authorize to go out to bid for our towing contract.
Motion? Second.
All in, oh, we'll call it out.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Now we have reports, anything from our township clerk, community agents, anything tonight? No reports from our township administrator Jeff Hatcher, Jeff, anything?
Just two items, first off, the branch collection crews are out. Given the storms that we've had recently, we've moved up the branch collections, so the public works department is out. Any branches that you have, please put them out by the curb. Consult the website, if you have any information with respect to how to put them out and links to them all, the information with respect to those issue. And secondly, for the public, we have budget review meetings coming up, coming up on March 12th and 26th with council, introduction of the budget we intended for April 2nd and adoption hopefully on May 7th. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anything from our township solicitors office?
Nothing to report tonight, council president.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we always invite representatives from the fire commissioners to give us an update on the comings and goings. And this evening, we are once again in the presence of Jim Bowles, commissioner.
Good evening. First of all, I apologize for not showing up the last two months.
I thought we broke up.
I know, two months ago, I couldn't even tell you what I was doing. Last month, I was actually in the building, but the consultant firm that was with the squad kind of grabbed me as I was walking in the door and, not for personal, but that's more important than personal.
Okay.
I'll be honest. So, I guess, what I should have reported on last month was Montclair Fire. About three o'clock in the morning, a resident across the street saw the porch light flickering as he described it to us, and he thought it was fog coming in. So he kind of looked at it and went back to bed, and the fog was actually just spoken, the fire started. So the contractor was working on that house, had just completed it. He was coming back to get his sander at seven o'clock in the morning and the entire front of the house was on fire. So Chester Avenue had a chrome, Chief Pete was on the nozzle, which is kind of rare, but... So crews went into service at two and a three quarters with foam caps and had it knocked down in... Well, by the time I turned around to see what they were doing, they already had the fire knocked down. So several residents, when we went back to duty investigation, came up and thought it was amazing that we showed up and in less than a minute, there was no fire anymore. They were all getting ready for their own houses to catch. So we were proud of that, great stop. Cheap kudos on that, when he was on the nozzle. The more recent one, I'm sure you're all aware, the Millan East Fire. That's still, so obviously that one of Montclair was electable, that was easy. The fire that we just had at Millan East, that's still under investigation. Obviously, we know where it started, not quite sure what started it yet. They're sending out a lot of things to be looked at. You find computers and TVs and all kinds of electronic stuff. So they're sending that out to get that NLI, just to see if it was short for the fire or what. So that is under investigation. That particular fire came in later around 4:30 a.m., came in as people trapped. Chester Avenue Station had a crew sleeping, so they were a very quick response. That initial crew started a fire attack. The chief of Riverside actually lives on that end of town, so he got there first on a confirmed working fire and people trapped. The initial response is Delran, Centuminson, Riverdun, and Riverside. The crew out of Chester Avenue, since they were sleeping there, obviously was first in. They started the initial fire attack. Centuminson's crew, which was coming out of Taylor's Lane, our second engine and Riverdun's got there about the same time. Centuminson was kind enough to lay a line from L&amp;M Bakery into the fire. Our second engine went in and did a secondary search while the first crew was fighting the fire. Captain Stellwag found the three-foot by four-foot hole in the bedroom. Captain Stellwag's an excellent firefighter. If he didn't know what he was doing, he probably would have went up on the first floor. As he was starting to go through the hole, he managed to grab a hold of the support that wasn't burned through, kind of held himself up. Once he got back up and onto the floor again, backed out, did a search in the front bedroom, and then came downstairs. At that point, Chief Pete made a defensive attack because it was going through the roof and out the windows. So they backed off, kind of dropped in some heavy master streams. That's probably why you saw as much foam as you did. Channel six made a big deal about how much foam we used. Once you put the squirt in the service, it needs 800 gallons a minute to knock down the heavy fire. And with the temperatures the way it was, normally the foam will build up and then kind of calm down and kind of make a nice little slurry on top of the fire. But because it was so cold, it actually froze in the little bubble aereated. So instead of settling down, it just froze and stayed there, so you had about two foot of fluff.[1774.18] So instead of settling down, it just froze and stayed there, so you had about two foot of fluff. Would like to use a lot more than you did, probably used...
Thirty gallons.
Thirty gallons, totally lit the fire. So we're running at 3% of water and then shooting air until it's... So as much as we were shoveling it to get it out of our way, it was frozen, so it was basically a big stoke. At that point, on the outside of the building, inside was doing its job. We did get a lot of phone calls, and they tried to get this out. The big thing with the joint base with A-T triple F, and we do have A-T triple F in our department, Sony used for petroleum-based fires. This is what they call knockdown for Class A or wood. So this is basically soap. But everybody knows the A-T triple F from watching it on and saying it's a hazard. This is not. In fact, just like I had suede boots on that I got destroyed in a car accident, I had them on, and I got an ambulance call. They were brand-new boots. And they got all... I don't know, it was tar or something, so my boots had black smudges all over it, so I just used them for work boots. And I had them on that day, and when I got back, I just rinsed them off, and they look like brand-new now because the foam actually cleaned the suede. So it puts the fire out, and I got a brand-new pair of boots out, so it's all good. But we did have parents call up and say that their kids were tracking it into their living room because the kids were all playing in the stone. So we were getting some phone calls, and it was safe. We try to, before we leave, tell everybody in the area what it is, what it's made out of, and that, you know, as much as we don't want your kids playing in it, you should wash your hands when you're done playing in it because it is a soap. And it is a concentrated soap, so some people do get an irritation out of it, but it's not a hazardous material like the A-T triple F.
You did a great job with that fire, though. That was a big...
Guys did an excellent job. You know, like I said, Captain Stellwag should kudos on that job because if he didn't know what he was... If he wasn't as skilled as he was, he probably would have got her on that one because she was coming through the floor.
So when you say he found the hole, he found it with his feet as they were going through it?
Correct. Well, the hole was already there, and it was... You know, the smoke was down to the floor, so he had no visibility, so he was just doing a primary search going around. And as he tells it, as he reached in, he kind of leaned forward, which made his body kind of twist. So he started to go through, and he grabbed a joist that wasn't burned through, he kind of held himself up on the joist, got himself back up on the bedroom floor, and then kind of backed out after he did the primary search in the front of the room.
Some might know that some of the residents are doing clothing drives for the family. Is there anything that... Does the fire department have a link or anything, or any...
Trying to think who it was now. We did put it up on our thing because unfortunately, from my understanding, the upstairs did not have insurance of people. The fire department met with the insurance of the building and then the insurance of, obviously, the business. I feel sorry for both. I mean, buildings can be replaced and rebuilt. Felt sorry for the family on the second floor because they didn't have insurance and kind of lost, I mean, everything. Luckily, they all got out, and we always hate it when a business disappears from our community, so hopefully they get back.
If you're going to post anything about that, please let us know.
Yeah, because we had it on theirs and started putting it out, and we started putting it out on Facebook from our side, so...
I apparently saw that.
Just not quite sure what the link is, to be honest with you.
I couldn't find an actual link to whatever. It was just people saying, please donate. And I'm... The father of the family is in great shape. He's the same size as I am. And, you know, I'm sure I could help him. I just don't know... I don't know how to reach him.
Right. Fran? What's her last name?
Conroy.
Conroy.
Okay. So just get the...
She's all right. The other things that I say that I hesitate was, I know there was a couple of fund me pages set up for those people. I tend to stay away from bringing that out just because we don't know.
I'd be glad to help with some clothes.
Okay.
For the father, for sure. All right, thanks so much, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Reports from members of the township, all right? Representing Ward Two, Tom Lyon, councilman.
So a quick pre-holder of Conroy updated me on a couple of things that he had floating out there. So getting up to speed on that, reaching out to the people I need to reach out on. And just want to say thanks to everybody up here helping me as we get started on this. I appreciate everybody's help and insight. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for reaching out to the folks that are doing the remediation and taking the time to meet with Jeff Wharton. Next, representing Ward Three, Councilman Mike Ormando. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report this evening.
Representing Ward One, Councilwoman Virginia Pareo. Virginia, anything this evening?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Councilman-at-large, Tyler Burrell. Councilman, anything?
Nothing to report this evening.
Wow, this sounds like a trend. And we've been under the weather, so I have no report this evening. Mr. Mayor, do you have any announcements for us?
Yeah, I do. I have a couple. First, I'd like to say in regards to the Fairview Road median by Route 130, I do not support the funding for the engineering or the reconstruction, which the amount is approximately $85,000 or that cost. When I first became mayor, I also felt that the median was a major inconvenience and definitely impacted the traffic flow from Fairview onto Route 130 during the morning and afternoon rush hours. But I do not feel that the median is causing a safety issue, nor has it resulted in any accidents related to the intersection, which I discussed with our chief of police. The accident reports are also being reviewed by our traffic engineers for their concurrence. I feel the funding can more effectively be utilized on an intersection like Conroy and Hartford Roads, where the safety is a major concern and where accidents are more of a common occurrence. Also, with the high school in Millbridge being near the corner of Conroy and Hartford, and with the new commercial development occurring on Bridgebrough Road, the increase in traffic will only add to the volume of traffic through the Conroy and Hartford Roads and make it a lot worse. So I feel that that's a more necessity to look at than the median currently where we are today. Secondly, I would like to update everyone on the meeting, and I'm attempting to set up the mayors and engineers on the neighboring riverfront towns regarding the flooding issues that we are facing from the Rancocas. The idea here is to address the problem as a united group head-on with our state and federal official and agency. We currently have 11 towns interested in working together to pursue state and federal funding to correct the issues. Plan on having this meeting probably towards the end of this month or early in April. And finally, I just want to remind everyone, and Joe Prentos is here, that the RAC will be coordinating Easter egg hunt in April and barring inclement weather, which we ran into last year, but hopefully it won't be canceled through the weather this year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I ask for motion in the public.
So moved.
Second.
Second favor.
Aye.
I oppose. Pushing carries, so we're in the public portion of our meeting. For those who haven't been here before, I ask me to be recognized and step up and... Step up, state your name and address for the record. Remember that your microphones are currently for reporting only. We ask you to speak loud and clear and to speak directly to council. Thanks very much.
Hi, I'm Jeff Bodger from 116 Kathleen Abbey. I've got a couple of things I just want to go over. Polite holes, Patricia and Diane. It's been fixed and fixed and fixed over the years. Every year, we went through the same thing. If you can send somebody out and take care of it. Actually, like you keep fixing the same thing. The water's being pushed out from the house that's on Diane on the other side, some of them. It goes across the road, and actually with the freezing and so on, this happens all the time. Options I see is to either let and put the water into the sanitary sewer. I know that's like... Oh, no, no, no. It's only one house. The alternative is, you're at the point now where the road has been fixed so many times, you're going to have to cut the road and put a new asphalt on there. When you go to dill, just put a paper cross, put a drain on one side and get done. That'll be the way to do it.
So...
That's just for your info, please.
Coincidentally, Patricia and Diane are the two of the roads that are in our road program. How about that? How's that for responsive?
Okay. The other one that gets me, and I hope it's got to be anything, is Haynes Mill and 130. With all the stop potholes, all the fixes and repairs over time, everybody here goes down that road. You make the right-hand turn, and it's pump, 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 pump. I got to tell you, when I think back, the county, I guess, redid 130. And what absolutely kills me is they repaved 130, but you guys didn't get that fixed before they did 130. Or at least check with them and say, how far are you going back on that apron there? I mean, this is past, it's done, there's nothing to be done. But you got to plan things better.
So while it appears that we don't, that's not necessarily because we're not trying to be proactive, but I want to ask Jeff, how far in do they...
The area that he's talking about is the state right away. That's part of the state's road.
It's not our road.
Well, they either... Either they didn't pave it and come all the way in, or it was a perfect opportunity to take care of our street that then when they repaved 130, it would have been theirs. That's all.
So again, what Jeff is saying is the part that you're talking about is still their property, still their road.
So that means they didn't fix it?
They didn't correct... They didn't do what they should have done.
I mean, a touch base.
Can you make a call?
A little touch base.
Do something? Yeah, okay.
You're two for two, so I'll tell you, Jeff.
This is easy. I just wondered, just come here. Look, Conroy Park, it's right around the corner from us. I take my grandkids there, but I don't now because of the thing being done. I got to tell you, the first thing that irked me was to see a sign that said, "The Conroy Park is closed until further notice." You know, I'm a resident and everybody else is residents, and this is again, as far as planning goes. When you do something like this, first of all, just think of the citizen, I'm speaking. Think of the people here, the residents, that if you're going to tell them that you're closing the park, you sure should have planned and known at least when it's going to open. So normally, it would be, "Park is closed, we're renovating, it's going to be open on or about whatever the date is." You didn't do that with any of the signs. Now, maybe it's on the website. I just noticed that when I came in, that there's something there about the Conroy on the website. But, I mean, it's just being nice to people.
Sure. I want to go back to Jeff again on this one. Jeff, you have...
The issue with that is it was a winter project, and as you can see, we have not had weather that's been cooperative to any of this construction. They've been trying to get some cement down in the park where areas that need so to... I mean, we could have said May 1st, and we can make May 1st, but we're trying to get it done sooner than that. And that's the only reason we didn't have an open date is with winter projects, we're at the mercy of the weather.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, but if it's me, I'm just going to say, give the people the May 1st date. At least I'd be able to go, oh, it's going to take a little bit of time. That's fine. I'm okay with that. But then I got to ask you about the Conroy stuff. Now, since my kids play there all the time, I know what it's like. Yeah, there was one thing that was broken and this and that, but they had a lot of fun. Now, I've gone over there and seen it a couple of times as far as what the progress is. The entertainment centers, or whatever you want to call it, those two areas for the kids, they were knocked down, and now there's these little dinky things in their place. Please give me the concept of what you guys are trying to accomplish with Conroy. Are you doing it because you had to do it? Is it to save money? What? Because, I mean, what you had there was good, and now you've replaced it with some little dinky things.
Jeff, we get... Well, there was some safety issues, Jeff, and what I asked...
I mean, most of it goes right to safety issues, is that the equipment that was there, we have our parks inspected just about monthly, and then the joint insurance one comes in with the professionals and looks at them probably biannually. And most of the equipment that we had was out of date with respect to the safety regulations for playgrounds, so we had to go towards equipment that met their safety guidelines.
Well, kids aren't going to get hurt too much because there's not much to play with on it. Okay. All right. I guess the kids will have less to...
I don't disagree with you. It doesn't feel like it's much fun to me.
They caught... Well, you know something on the cost? Did it cost the town money to do this?
Well, sure. Sure, but we did save some money on the removal. Will it be saved?
I was going to ask you, like, what did you do? Did you scrap that? At least that's on...
We had a bid, actually. A company bought, or an organization bought the whole park from Mountain Midwest and picked it up, paid for it, and then took it out for us.
Excellent. Okay. I thought it was great. And last thing, I just heard about this Holy Cross stuff. They're going to be putting up a bunch of, what do you call it? Low-income housing or whatever. I don't care about the low-income thing, but it's just 220 units over there on Holy Cross?
So there are... Certainly, the rumors are swell. So first of all, let me say that we're not putting up anything. What happened as the result of a lawsuit, and I can give you all the information or direct you to, the township was sued for not having enough affordable housing. People refer to it often as COA, which is the council of affordable housing, which is now defunct because it was defunded, but the courts have taken over. There was a lawsuit, there were several interveners they're called. We wrote up something that is available to the public, not on the township website, but on my website and the political party's website. Be happy to direct you after the meeting where that is. And all of the numbers were a result of the negotiations to settle that that they had asked for.
This was an after fact thing that you just kind of had to do?
Absolutely.
Because the reason... Okay, that is fine. The reason that I was bringing it up was, I was just going to ask you guys, how much is it going to cost you to put more residential units in the town? I mean, it kills me. And I've said this before, too. It kills me when we put the residential units in because I know kids got to go to school, taxes are going to go up. So like when you're doing something and you know it's going to cost more money, I would have thought that through zoning and so on, you'd be able to take care of that. But all right, this is an after fact. I think I was here maybe a couple of six months or so ago, and had to do with the golf course over there, stellite farm, and so on. This is all kind of that same thing.
Right.
This is the result of that.
It was a very large lawsuit, and they were asking for a large number of affordable homes, and typically, affordable homes are 20% of the development, or in some cases, an all-inclusive affordable. It's really complicated. I'm sure you can get this, so I'm going to just throw it out there.
I'm going to end up moving from Jersey anyway. Taxes are too high on dumb hills.
So the bottom line is they asked for, depending on which time, between 827 and 1100 affordables, which would have ended up with about 45,500 new homes in town. We were able to negotiate down to 681 with only 186 affordables to be built. So they went from over 800 to 186.
This had to do with the... This had to do with the unit start? It was going to be built, or it was something that was built before and was a catch-up?
It was...
A little bit of those?
They... There was no COA requirement after 1995. That was round two. Round three never came out. They sued us saying that we didn't meet COA, except that we not only met, but exceeded round two. There was no number. So they sued us with the number that they... Right. So the bottom line is they asked for a whole bunch, and we were able to reduce that a whole bunch. And all the numbers are available. If you'd like, I can give them to you.
That's okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, sure. Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir.
Hi, Chris Martin's from 160 White Marshway. I was wondering if the fire budget and commissioner election could be moved to the regular election day, like the school budget was moved to the regular day. It's rather poorly publicized. I know you legally put it in the paper. I looked on the township website, and there was nothing about it. They mentioned Easter Bunny and Santa. And I guess this was more important than the fire budget, which is a tax.
So let me just say that the fire district, because it's a district and not a department, is a completely separate autonomous entity. They're not under our jurisdiction, they're not under our control, and therefore, when they have their elections, is either a decision of theirs or... I know that there are some departments that... Jim, if you need to help me...
Sure.
...that do have them in November, but that's when they opt to have their election, and it is not anything that we have any jurisdiction...
The voting was in a township facility.
Pardon?
The voting was in a township facility.
Correct.
It's right here.
Correct.
So it seems like there's some control over that.
The only thing we rent were just provided...
I'll answer for you. This was the first year that was even possible to have it in that election with everybody else. Much like the state of New Jersey does, they gave us the information way too late to even think about having it this year, so we're in discussion about it.
But every year, we have our election. I rarely see it.
And not to say that...
And not, not to say that, I'm not saying that we wave flags for that, but I know there was 3,800 brochures went out with telling you when the election was, who was running. I'm just telling you, 3,800 were mailed out, so I think that's pretty good advertising, plus the newspaper and all that.
Well, that's true. I didn't receive that, but that's the first time I've seen anything publicized townwide. I mean, it hadn't been for that and the signs and...
Right, right. Try to put signs out, try to put that out, it's, it's...
It doesn't make the fire department look good. I think it's almost like a hidden election, and I think it would be better if it were run one day along with every other election.
So, Mr. Martin, whether we agree with you or not, personally, I do, but this is a decision that's strictly under the jurisdiction of the Fire District and the Fire Commissioners. We don't have any say. We provided a public space for them to hold the voting, and that was the extent of what we're involved with.
Could the town provide more of the city on the township website?
I'm sure we could. Let's try to coordinate that, and the commissioners...
They're addressing the town council like this.
Absolutely.
As a service to the town.
So the, the commissioners are considering or having a conversation about moving it to November? Regardless of that, we'll be sure to get, get that out on our website. We try to stay agnostic with that and not promote one way or the other, as it's not really under our purview, but we'll be happy, we'll be happy to do that. If they just send us the details, then we'll publicize it for you. Absolutely.
The town must collect money from me.
We do. We are the collector. We collect all the money.
Yes.
But it's, it's not ours to keep. Only that we...
God hands off.
We get it and give it to them, what's, what the part that's theirs. I understand. I, I agree with your concern. I'm sure it would, it would create more voter turnout, and certainly more publicity, and perhaps more people being in part of the event itself.
Also, we're cost-effective, and I'll tell you, we are very cost-effective, because we've actually changed these nonpartisan elections in May, and we felt bring them in line and save money, and so we're all for that. So, to be honest with you, it's something that made it really up to the Fire Department, but we fully support that.
Yes, I would love to that, Charlie.
Yes. Sir, the public meetings of the Fire District will also be a forum where you can present all this concern.
Whether the public meetings, Jim, are you...
Two weeks from now?
The Fire District Public Meeting, someone up and join us, Jim.
Hey! So, here's, here's a couple of things that you might want to think. And, and we are, we are looking at moving it, for a lot of reasons. If we did move it to November, and we kept it under 2%, the residents wouldn't vote on the budget at all. So that's some of the things we're looking at, because it would actually take away from the residents voting on our budget, because they wouldn't vote on our budget if we moved it to November.
What do you mean not vote on?
If we kept, current budget, if we keep it, if we don't raise it any more than 2%.
2.40.
Thank you. And if we move it to November, then the budget does not get voted on, it's just automatic. So the only thing you would vote on is the actual Fire Commissioner. We put out 800 absentee ballots, and only received back 152.
15, yeah, something like that.
Something around 152. So we sent out 800 to residents...
I'm sorry, why would, why wouldn't we be voting on that budget?
Because that's what the state of New Jersey has determined, just like the School District, if, if, I guess, to entice, again, they didn't give us the information until it was way too late to even do that this year. That was their own doing, and that's just the state of New Jersey. So, but the reason why we're really looking at it is, what they said is, if you move it, and if you don't raise your budget by 2%, it doesn't get voted on, it's an automatic pass. So the residents wouldn't even vote on the budget if we moved it to November, just on the border Fire Commission. Not that you wouldn't, we need only second, fourth Tuesday of the month. So it's in this voting, it's down the hall. So I would encourage you to come talk to us, get your point across, we welcome the call, trust me.
So do you think by next year, they would...
Again, I'm one Fire Commissioner, I don't, it's a, it's a five-member board, so we're discussing it, no decision denied. But we, I encourage you to come talk to us, get your point across, and we can talk to you and do that.
Right, and this is exactly what happened with the School Board. Their elections were separate as well, and they decided to do that, and as long as their budget is within the 2% restriction, then it's automatically approved. If it goes above that, then they have to vote as well on the budget. So it's a good point, well-taken. You talk right to the Commissioner. I love when that happens. Thank you.
So, before, I got a question when I walked in.
So, so I can't make you sit down and come?
You could, you're boss.
Jim Bauer.
James Bauer, 816 Edgewood Avenue. A question about the development at the Holy Cross is, do I understand that's a definite yes, or I'm a little, I don't quite understand it. I know all of the, the other things.
So it is included, it was included in the negotiated settlement as, as the proposal? So if they decide to continue, interveners came in, asked for 400 units there, with a set aside of approximately 20% for affordable, and we were able to negotiate them to 285 with the, with the settlement.
Well, what I'm saying is, the property on Holy Cross, which has arrived.
Right.
Is that being developed or not being developed?
A portion of it. It is proposed to be developed by developers. It was included in our plan to meet the negotiated terms.
Do you know where that traffic's dropping out of?
We, it, part of that, which was discussed, was because, believe me, I'm the first guy that said, you have, you have an emergency squad, a fire department, a police department, a municipal building, and two schools within a quarter mile either way of this development. So, so they were amenable to having an entrance and exit on Route 130, but there'll also be the Holy Cross exit. So we hope that people get tired of waiting for an hour to get out and use the highway.
And I know, listen, I know, nobody's for it, but ironically, when we built the station over 10 years ago, it was about 12, the county and the state weren't even gonna let us put a driveway in, and we had to fight for it, because they said that Chester Avenue was so overwhelming the traffic. And then they wouldn't let us put a hall on the firehouse because of the traffic problems, congestion. Even though we said that hall rentals are like Saturday nights and Saturday afternoons when no business and no children in school, and the state, the state and county still said, absolutely not, and we actually had to send a letter to them stating that we would never put a hall there, because Chester Avenue couldn't handle that little bit of traffic. So it's amazing to me that this wonderful state and county...
Amazing for the quick to follow what happened.
Listen, again, nothing personal, lawyers kill everything.
Wow, well-taken.
But, but again, you're fighting here 10 years ago for a 30-minute fire station, and now you're gonna be the DMs in, but that can handle it.
I understood, wasn't what we, we certainly didn't want it?
I don't know that. I wanna see that traffic survey compared to the traffic survey that we had. It's amazing.
We are in the process of, more information, and we've started discussions within council of having another public meeting to talk about the result of the settlement. That's a good point. Yes, sir.
Is everyone doing tonight?
Very well. I need your name and address for the...
All right, Joe Verati, 880 Warford Drive. And the point I really wanna bring up to the council tonight is about the Conroe Summer Camp, to go back to the whole summer camp and the whole Conroe Park. And I'd like for this council to consider moving the annual summer camp over to the community park after the completion of Jake's Place. And really, I, I bring that point up because Jake's Place is supposed to be a more inclusive playground, and I think it's important for the kids of, of this town to be able to play with individuals who might not be completely physically able, or have all the faculties and abilities that, that most of us have. I think it's, I think it's an important thing for, for kids to, to know that not everybody is like them, and not everybody is, is as different as they think. And this is really important to me, and the reason I bring it up is because my brother has some physical disabilities, and I remember it was difficult for him to, you know, participate in, in everything that my friends and I would be able to do. And I think being able to give other kids the opportunities and the chances to be able to truly play and connect with, with others is important for the development of, of this younger generation. And the other point that I bring up is moving it to, to the community park offers better facilities in terms of there's, there's more space, but the space is also enclosed by natural barriers, fencing, and, and the various equipment that the, that the park has that Conroe doesn't. The parking lot is bigger, which would assist in the pickup and the drop off of those other kids. And I feel like for traffic purposes on Conroe, it would definitely decrease the volume. I kinda think it's, it's unfair to ask the council to determine whether or not this occurs right now, considering that Jake's Place and the construction of it has been postponed indefinitely, but I would just like the council to consider discussing this and consider addressing this point in a future meeting.
Great.
This is the RAC chairman.
There you go.
And he's the one that you should talk to, and he should actually maybe get involved with it.
We are in the process of moving it. Just so you know. Our measure of ability to do it, Charlie.
They are already in the process of your...
That's a, that's a good response, right? I'll tell you what, we're, we're on a roll here. We solved a whole problem. Get some more people.
Hey, Joe, Joe, maybe you also wanna get his contact information, because maybe he might work this big help out.
We'll gladly help out. We can, you know, talk after this. Not a problem.
Great, Joe. Thank you for coming out. Has there anyone you'd like to fix? Feels a little bit like lords over here.
You're doing a great job, you know, fixing all those...
No disrespect.